This is a regular meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Planning and Zoning Commission and public hearing. We have a forum. We have five members present, one on Zoom or on the phone, and one absent. Mr. Commissioner Kinslick is absent. Will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is a call to the public. This is a business meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the commission as a whole and not individual commission members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Commission action on items brought up and called to the public is limited by the open meeting law. The commission may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard or discussed in call to the public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. There were no requests or call to the public, so we'll move to the next item. Item C, the minutes from the last meeting. C1, we're going to consider approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on March 14th, 2024. Has every commissioner had a chance to review the minutes? Yes? I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting. Show a hand. Mr. Commissioner Pence, are you in favor of approving the minutes?
I approve the minutes.
Thank you. Next item is new business. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the chairman and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after commission discussion. Questions from commission members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the chairman at any time. And we have no request to speak from the public. We're going to move to the next item, which is D1, discussion and legal action considering a zoning amendment, C-88, to the Pine Top Lakeside zoning map from R14 to MH4 for APNs 311-34-007A and 311-34-007B. Community Development Director Lloyd?
Good evening, commission. I'll go through quickly my staff report. As submitted by the property owner, the request is to amend the zoning at 2558 East Poplar Drive from R14 to MH4. Request is for the property owner to install a manufactured home. R14 precludes the installation of manufactured homes. This neighborhood is a hodgepodge of zoning and legal nonconforming uses such as RV parks. The area along Poplar is a mix of C1 to the south, R3 to the west, and R4, R14 after FIPS Drive along the northern side of Poplar to the east end of the street where there is our own zoning. There is also a PUD north along Royine Drive. R14 zoning is identified within 1728.010. State's purpose of this zone is to conserve and protect single-family residential development in areas that are suitable and appropriate, taking into consideration existing conditions, including present use of land, present lot sizes, future land use needs, and availability of public utilities. However, that was not the case with Poplar, as evidenced by the sheer quantity of manufactured and legal nonconforming uses within that neighborhood. Furthermore, 17.28.020A permitted specifically disallow mobile and manufactured homes. If we were to inventory the existing uses within the immediate vicinity, we'd find predominantly manufactured homes and RV parks on that section of Poplar. The zoning needs to reflect the situation's reality adequately, and there are many encroachments within the setbacks. In a perfect world, zoning would reflect this and contain a mix of MH4 and RVP. However, this would require an amendment to the general plan and zoning map. MH4 zoning would allow the applicant to proceed and match the surrounding character on Poplar Drive. The general plan land use element identifies the applicant's property as medium-density parcels, one to four dwelling units per acre. MH4 has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. Therefore, the request aligns with the general plan. Furthermore, the applicant owns multiple parcels. The request would not be considered spot zoning. One of the requirements of the general plan is to eliminate illegal nonconforming uses, and one way to do that is to amend the zoning to adequately reflect what is in that neighborhood. So that's the nature of this request. Go ahead and take any questions you guys have.
So the other properties that are legal nonconforming, if they were to change, say pull the manufactured house out, could they put another manufactured home back on it?
So yes and no. It depends on the timeframe in between those, the legal nonconforming use. If it was immediate, or if there was a fire and it burned down, they would be allowed to install the same size. If it lasts for six months, then that legal nonconforming status, which people consider grandfather, goes away. So one of the issues there is, especially with the RV parks I've seen, those don't get permitted through us or the state, so they kind of just multiply. And if you, it's not this particular instance, but along that street, you'll see there's at least three or more RV parks, and they're not zoned for that. But yeah, so to answer your question, yes and no.
What would prevent that from happening on these lots, since they're all like a half acre? If there's a 10,000 square foot minimum, does that mean they could divide the lot three times and put three units on each lot? Therefore, we'd...
So in the case of tonight, Sergio Martinez, who's in the back here, he had already, he's already split that property, and so he would be limited by statute. As far as the number splits, he could technically split it one more time, but he would have a difficult time meeting the minimum standards. I think he's at .58, but even at that, that only allows two manufactured homes maximum, so it would prevent, per se, a manufactured home subdivision going in there.
But he could put two on?
He technically could, yes.
And he could put two on each? We have four.
It'd be three, because there's already a site-built home on one of the properties.
There's also already a manufactured home on one of the properties?
Yes, there's also already a manufactured home on the adjacent one immediately to the east as well. There's multiple, and that one's owned the same, too.
The one that's currently there looks like it was just put there? Is that correct? Or recently?
Yeah, I believe so.
It's not occupied or...
That question?
It's not occupied, doesn't have any...
Sergio, can you please come up?
I'd like to come up to the podium.
We have to get you in the mic.
So the manufacturer that's currently there, it's not occupied, it doesn't have any utilities, no sewer, no water. We are in the process of, obviously, hooking it up to all the utilities, but obviously, I need to get the approval from the city first.
So when I first met Mr. Martinez, he came forward and said he wanted to get a manufactured home permit, and I told him, number one, we don't issue those permits, and number two, I wouldn't be able to approve the zoning because it's not a legal use. And unfortunately, Mr. Martinez had already purchased that manufactured home before he got that answer. So he, I believe he had it somewhere else for as long as he could, and then at one point, he had to bring it onto that property. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct. And I'm not planning on bringing four other manufactured homes into the property. I just need the secondary home so we could remodel our first home, which is already there in the property.
There's a series of lots, 2580 A, B, C, and D. There are trailers on that right now.
That's correct, and that's one of Sergio's neighbors, and I don't, I don't have an answer for what or why that occurred, but I think that's been there for a number of years.
Yeah.
I don't know the exact date, but it's been there for a number of years, so...
And you look at it.
Yeah, his immediate neighbor, I actually talked to an agent, wasn't anybody that's in the room tonight, but I spoke to a real estate agent, and they had expressed interest in manufactured home. I said, well, you might want to talk to the neighbors to go in on zoning amendment, but I never heard from the map for that, so I don't know. That's far I got with that conversation.
But that area, that block on Poplar, it's not zoned for those trailers.
Yeah, there's, up and down that street is manufactured homes. It should have never been zoned, R14, in my opinion. It doesn't, it wouldn't, it shouldn't fall into that category. It should have shown in the general plan and in the zoning as MH4 and RVP.
But when was that put into effect?
As far as zoning?
Yes.
It got, as far as I can see back to, it was, it's been that way. But there is a discrepancy on some of the RV parks, whether they were zoned R low or C1, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. But there is discrepancies in there, and I don't, I can't answer to why.
But how did these other manufactured homes or trailers get put in there when it wasn't?
I can't, I can't answer that, and I've always wondered that. Some of them, that is the older section of Pine Top, and some of those were most likely there before 1984, when the town...
Was incorporated.
Born, so we couldn't, at that point, they would be legal nonconforming, but it's hard to show the paper trail for that. And I don't know why the choice was made for R14. I can't answer that, but I could tell you that looking at the characteristics of that neighborhood and the zoning requirements and the land use element, that it should reflect it as what it actually is instead of what other areas of, in that vicinity are. Because there's a, there's a PUD neighborhood to the north, as I discussed in my staff report, and the characteristics is different on that. And then to the north, there's R14 properties, and those are, those are appropriately zoned, but I don't believe that the properties on Poplar are or ever were.
So would that leave other lots still with, with the R1 zoning, though?
Yeah, the request tonight is only for Mr. Martinez's two properties, so the hope is that others will come in and also apply. I don't have many tools, but one of them is, like, when I had the conversation with Sergio, that the answer's no until the zoning change comes through. And I don't know why that was never done in the past. Can't answer for sins of the past.
Will we have?
What I've done.
Are we approving it for the whole area there or just for his property?
There's only two properties tonight that's on the request. If you look on, let's see, there's a, there's a map on, I think it's sheet three around there. Is that page 10 on, in there? Page 10 shows the two split properties. They're both .58. They are 170 feet from an area that already is zoned for manufactured homes. So yeah, it's not clear why, to me, why these properties are, because there's already a mixed use. This property adjacent to him already is doing the same. There's properties up and down that street that the characteristic is identical.
Tim, just, just for clarity on this and to back up Jeremiah's point, the property directly to the east of it, so you know, the, there's two affixed mobile homes. One mobile home is 1970 and one is 1969, clearly out of the guise of the creation of the town.
Right.
So I don't think it matters how it happened. It's there now, so it's not even a relevant question, so we should just focus on whether...
But the relevance to what those are, I mean, to today's standards, those mobile homes border on modern size of travel trailers. And the, to me, the relevance of that is if somebody owns those lots, kind of in a desirable area, national forest behind it, and they choose to pull one out and build a house there, and all of a sudden, there's a bunch of travel trailers or mobile homes on these lots, and we've changed the zoning, we've radically changed, even, because even if there's an RV park to the south of that, that RV park will someday, those older RVs will pull out and newer RVs will pull in. And the whole face of that, we make decisions that could completely change the face of that little neighborhood.
Well, my point was still, why it happened, you kept asking.
Right.
I'm just saying it's cool not applying it to anything to change.
Sure.
Fine.
But yeah, but the relevance of, you know, that, that, that affixed mobile home, if you will, to today's standards are, and then, you know, the other, the other thing that hopefully the planning and zoning can, it's not for discussion tonight, but that something that we need to discuss quickly is bringing in mobile homes that have been in another location, and then they get placed, because that also has a very big implication from the resale perspective. Now we have a home that can't be sold other than to cash buyers, and so it really puts a hard hit on the next family that could go to that home.
So speaking to that, it's not on the agenda tonight, but to address your question, I agree to a point with what you're saying. But, and one of the things that I, that I'm looking forward and bringing soon to you guys is a mandatory requirement that no home, no manufactured homes older than 20 years could be set anywhere in the town. So that's currently not in the code, and that's one of the things that we can do to address that. Because, I mean, we know that those, the value of those just isn't there, but somebody can buy one from the 90s for 40K and bring it into town. It's certainly a cheaper alternative to address the affordable housing situation that we have, to do that than to pay for something else a lot more unaffordable. But at the same time, on the flip side of the coin, there's most of, the majority, if not all, of the abatements that I have to do in code enforcement are on manufactured homes. And so that's what's going to be driving that when you guys see that in the future in a few months.
So both pieces of property are point over a half acre?
Correct.
Is there any way, what's zoning for like half acre to an acre?
For a half acre, I think it's R2, but that one, there's only a few zones that would allow manufactured homes, like MH4 or MH6.
And R2 won't?
I don't believe so. I think it's just half acre. There's, so there's a different standard. There's a, some of the zones allow what's called, considered Class A manufactured, and that's basically like your, they're not manu, they're not manufactured, but modular homes. So they're built to a different code standard. They're built to the IRC as opposed to the HUD standard.
Is there, for the lawyer on it, commission, is there a, if we pass this, can we put a caveat in there that you cannot put on more than one manufactured home on that property? He said he's not going to, but can we put that caveat in there?
I would think so.
Add that to the motion.
Yeah, we could add that to the motion and, you know, limit that. I mean, you could do that, and if you wanted it to be to Jeremiah's point, not more than 20 years old. I don't know if it's a new one or...
At the time that it's being put in?
Correct.
Mr. Martinez, how old is the manufactured home that's sitting there?
It was built in 1990.
With over 20.
Yeah, it's 34 years old.
See, I was thinking even a stipulation of allowing the manufactured home to go in, then it would need to be of a new one, even.
The new one that you're putting in is 20, it's 1990?
All right, so after, after I bring that code change forward, that would not be allowable, but in the current code, there's no, there's nothing saying that that's not allowable use.
But we also don't have to allow it right now because, if we don't pass this change?
Well, I think what you guys are proposing is like a conditional zoning request, or no, or ignore.
Or we'd be creating a grandfather if we move forward. Eventually, with the 20, we just accepted something that doesn't even comply with something in the future.
Right.
Exactly.
We can't base it off of future codes, though, either, because it's not actually effective until 30 days after, or after I get approval from recognition from you guys and approval from the council.
We're contemplating that.
I mean, you know, from a, just a landowner's perspective, I own a house in a neighborhood. Let's just say there's a vacant lot in my neighborhood, and somebody just rolls in with a mobile home on a weekend and slips it in there and then comes and asks for permission later to, call it what you want, spot zone it. I want to get this lot zoned for something different. I would fight to not have that happen.
Sure.
It would, it would affect all the homes around that neighborhood.
Right, and I would agree with, I would agree with, in your particular case, because that would drastically alter the characteristics of your particular neighborhood. In Mr. Martinez's case, it's not gonna, and if that's spot zoning...
Doesn't make a difference, because there's already a bunch of mobile homes in the neighborhood anyway, so I don't see why it would make a difference.
Because we keep degrading the neighborhood. Instead of building the neighborhood up, we're allowing it to degrade.
I agree 100% on that, but there is a particular park, a trailer park in the area I used to manage. The owner would bring manufactured homes from Yuma, Arizona, that were manufactured in 1985, and he would turn around and sell, and he still does it. He makes a ton of money renting spaces and selling the manufactured homes to tenants that are desperately need a home to stay.
And I'm pretty sure I know the area that you're talking about, because I have code enforcement on that area, because they brought in a home and they didn't meet the setbacks. One of the unfortunate things is there's also a statement in the code that says, if 40% of the people on the street don't meet setbacks, then you don't have to either. So I don't, I've never seen that before, but that is actually part of the code. And that, it makes it a little difficult to regulate on a case-by-case basis, but in, in that area, there's hardly any conformance to the zoning code and the setbacks for the RV parks and for manufactured home placements. And so I think that, while, to Mr. Fornos, Commissioner Fornos' point, it's valid. It would be especially valid in a different area, but I don't believe it's as valid in this particular area.
So with the...
Mr. Chilton doesn't agree with you.
I saw Mr. Chilton's, his correspondence, and I, he, he lives on Chilton Drive, I believe. I'm not sure if the name, the road's named after the family, but it probably is, I'm guessing. And on, if you go to his property, you wouldn't even see Mr. Martinez's, Martinez's manufactured home, because you turn off on FIPS before you, before you come across his property.
He's over 300 feet away, too, isn't he?
I'm not, I'm not certain, but our requirement is to notify for 300 feet, so he must, he must be close enough, or...
Well, there's a sign.
Either that, or probably one of, I think I heard initially from the HOA president over in that area, and they indicated that someone else would be responding. Because after I explained that, you know, this doesn't really alter the characteristics of that particular area, and you won't even see it going to your area, you'll drive by other things that probably look worse on the way there, but you won't actually see Mr. Martinez's property. So that is one of the counterpoints to that, and I mentioned...
Those rental trailers at the entrance there, those rental trailers on, what is that, the east side?
It's west.
West side.
Probably the west side of FIPS, yeah, that's...
The brown ones?
That's in pretty rough shape.
Yeah.
And those probably are...
You don't see his property at all.
The 1990 one that he brought in is, is, I can almost guarantee newer than what you see there.
Oh, yeah. Newer than those trailers, too, next door. They're probably 1950s, 1960s. There's a house on one of your properties, and you're gonna have this, is there one that's a primary, or are you gonna rent one or a house?
No, no. I plan on remodeling the, the original house that's already in the property.
On the A property?
Yes. The reason being, it's because the floors are sagging. There's a bunch of issues that are happening with that house, and there's no way of saving it. And we're wanting the second home so we can live in it while we're fixing the other one.
And when the other one gets fixed, what happens?
Once the other one gets fixed, my brother plans on moving into it. We came, we're together on, on purchasing the...
So they'll both be occupied?
Correct.
But on half-acre properties each?
Exactly. Yeah, it's, it has been split. They both will have their own sewer, their own waters, everything individually.
Commissioner Pence, do you have any questions or discussion?
One question, was there any feedback from any of the people that were notified to the east or west?
There was none from anybody on Long Poplar or nobody in, anybody in Royine, on Royine Drive. I did talk to Mr. Adcox at the end of the street, who we had met prior from the cell tower conditional use permit, who was a, and who opposed that, and he did not indicate any opposition to this. He kind of just posed the same question, I believe, as Commissioner Stewart and Fornos did, as far as to why it's there. And I, I can see that point, but to the, to the point, at least he's asking for forgiveness. I mean, yeah, he, he recognizes, but there's, that, that's not allowable, but he's here tonight to ask for forgiveness, basically. It's not necessarily the best route, but there's other people on that street not in that boat with Mr. Martinez, so...
I may have already messed up, but am I allowed to actually address him since he's right there?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, long-term, though, you plan on staying there. That's going to be your home.
Absolutely. It, we have kids that go to Blue Ridge, and that's another reason why we need this secondary home, so they don't lose their school year, they have their friends, they, they're, I mean, they're natives from Pine Top. We've been living here for about 26 years now.
Pine Top is your...
I used to serve...
Recognize you.
Yes. I used to serve, and I, I've served all of you at one point in time and, and throughout my history, and I remember Mr. Frank Smith sitting in the pasta house and having the calamari every, every morning, when you guys went and visited. So I, yeah, we have no plans on going anywhere. And, I mean, we do everything and anything to make the neighborhood look nicer and better. We've been in that property for four years now. We have green grass in front of the old house, but it, it looks way better than it used to.
Just out of curiosity, how are you gonna skirt the home? Just out of curiosity, how are you gonna skirt the home?
Uh, either vinyl or uh concrete blocks to secure, no animals will go in there and stuff.
Jeremiah, I have a question for you and maybe to Mr. Martinez.
Yeah.
Why are we rezoning both parcels? If one already has a site built, why don't we just rezone the one parcel to the east, which is contiguous to the mobile homes? And leave the zoning not M H on the one with the site-built house, because the site-built house, every property to the west of it is a site-built home. I just checked.
They get to Phipps, but yes.
Yeah, those are all site-built and to the north are all site-built.
Correct, that's the P U D.
So why don't we, I don't understand why both need to be rezoned.
So the, the logic behind that is it prevent, prevents the appearance of spot zoning because he has two properties. So he can rezone them both. It's not just a request for one specific property. So back to um Commissioner Fornos' question on if someone came into his neighborhood and, and pulled in a manufactured home and came to request uh this, the same change to M H four, the answer would be no, because it would be spot zoning, number one. And then number two, it, it would not match that, the characteristics of that particular neighborhood.
It just seems more logical to me because then hi, his property would be the one that just is the buffer between that and the M H.
Right. I think it, and the perfect solution would ha, would have been for Mr. Martinez and his neighbor to both come in and, and make this request, it would have made more sense. But to prevent spot zoning, which is a no-no in zoning, that's why he's here with the two properties that he both, he owns both of them. Ideally, yeah, it, it would be best if the property to the e, to the east came in as well, but M H four doesn't prevent, it doesn't preclude site-built homes.
But if it burned down, he could put a manufactured home in his place.
He could, or he could rebuild a, the same site-built home.
I tend to like Commissioner Salskoff's suggestion too, like draw a line right there, there's site-builts to the west.
I don't like the idea of it burning down and they could put a manufactured home there without leaving it the same zoning.
I don't like that.
But if we can't do spot zoning.
It's not that we can't, it's that it's kind of a no-no and, and it's maybe frowned upon, but it's not that we can't.
It seems logical to me in this, to do that, cause then his property would be the buffer.
I agree.
All the M H this way, you know, all manufactured this way and then his property there, this way would just be all site-built. Up to whatever that is, Phillips.
Phipps.
Phipps, sorry, I think, up to Phipps. And that would be harmonious with the neighborhood because to the north are all site-built and to the left is all of the site-built. I mean, to me, it just, I, I don't know.
Mr. Martinez, how do you feel about that?
You guys are in charge. I'm here just to put my face up.
I would say we put that in the motion with changing just that one lot that doesn't have the home on it.
This is normally where we would open it up to the public and since we don't have any requests to talk, we're gonna open and close the public part of this. Any other discussion from the commissioners? Jeremiah?
No.
We also stipulate that just one manufactured home would be allowed.
Yes, we can.
And that it would be skirted with.
With CMU blocks or?
I don't know, whatever is approved.
A condition. I think that you guys could do that, but in the future, it'd be hard to enforce unless there's some kind of instrument recorded at the county level probably for a conditional zoning request. Um, because our, nothing in our code would preclude him from putting in the two or one on the other or in the instance of worst case scenario, his home burns down before he can remodel it and putting in a total of four. But that's.
If we put stipulations, we could do that.
You can recommend stipulations. I mean, it's gonna go forward to council ultimately for them to make that decision, but you guys can recommend stipulations. I would advise against the spot zoning because it's a, it's a bad look and it uh kinda blows holes into the zoning code that we have. And I can see completely the rationale behind it, it totally makes sense. Um, and and that's why I default back to the suggestion of bringing in his neighbor as well, who already has the same thing going on. I don't know the relationship that they have and some people talk to their neighbors and most people never do.
For me, since he's the, the residential site-built home buffer owner, I mean, it's, it's, he, it's him that is the, he has the buffer.
Yeah.
You know, between the home, the resident site-built and the manufactured home.
It would limit, um, the, the number would go from four to two maximum. Which with the current, it would be three, but in worst case scenario, four, so it would limit it to two on, on the property to the east. But on the zoning map, if you're looking at it, it's one property zoned M H four and there's P U D to the north. It's already a super, it's a pretty bad hodgepodge. And what I would really like to see is that whole street to be M H four, doesn't prevent manufactured, it doesn't prevent manufactured and it doesn't prevent site-built homes. And I don't think that it makes any difference as far as that, the characteristics of that neighborhood.
City could certainly proactively go to that property owner and, and say that we'd like to make you legal.
Right, well, that was my suggestion early on.
Well, M H, I think anytime you, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Allison Todd, it would discourage someone from building a site home if the whole street's M H.
Right.
Right.
I mean, you just wouldn't wanna do that, correct?
So hav, having issued uh building permits here for the last three years, nobody's pulled a building permit on that street for a new home, not once. And having lived in the community since the early eighties, nothing's really changed in that neighborhood. As far as the characteristics. We can hope that it would improve and, and change to look like something else, but I, I just don't know that that's gonna happen. I think that by, by placing the zoning restriction of R one four on it, it's kind of, uh, it's limiting what's really there. And so in most cases, I would, I would agree wholeheartedly with uh what you guys are suggesting, but I think that in this specific case, it's not warranted.
I mean, as you know, I'm very familiar with legal issues on that street. And my analysis is a little different. And then, you know, I'll share that with the councils. I, I foresee a, a, a lot of these properties are owned for a long time by families and they're dying off now for old age and they're, are going to be sold. And I think that fact that they haven't sold previously is because we have these people who owned them for fifty years. And now they're gonna have new owners, which I've already see, seen transpire, who the conveyances are gonna start to happen. So the question we have to ask ourselves, do you just wanna make up all M H, which is going to change the nature of who would wanna build there, even if historically they haven't been conveyed. And there are some big pieces in there on that road.
There actually is.
That if this M H goes through and you wanna conform that street, I can speculate that you're not gonna like it.
These, these, the green nineteen, I don't care what year, forties travel trailers that are in there, eventually the floors are gonna fall out. They're going to have to replace them with something newer or better. I mean, there, there's, they're going to be forced into a position. It's, it's going to have to happen.
And right now, they can't put a trailer, they can't replace a trailer with a trailer because it's R one four.
Well, if they're legal non-conforming, they could, like in the case of the adjacent property that Mr. Salsko identified, that was placed before the town was incorporated. They could, but not anymore.
But if we put in that condition twenty years or newer, they have to conform to that.
Right, but it, it would prevent uh Mr. Martinez because he already indicated his.
But we can't do that now, we can wait until, and put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, I wanna bring that forward, I do. I think it's a good idea.
I understand your position on the spot zoning, but I mean, I just.
It's being on the corner, I think the house should stay on the corner and not allow a manufactured home.
I understand your position, you could still build a home, I just think it discourages that. At the same time, um, I, I'm compelled to, you know, let's rezone B, three eleven thirty-four oh oh seven B to M H and then, you know, not rezone the A next to it and that's the buffer between the two. And I don't think that sends any bad message for spot zoning A.
I hear that's a motion.
I can do, I can do it, but.
A is where the home is?
A is correct.
Will you have the? Okay. There weren't manufactured homes before you get to A, those were houses, okay?
Yeah, A is the site-built and B manufactured.
And then the properties next door, the address is twenty-five eighty A, B, C, and D, that's where the trailers are.
But if the house, I'm assuming was probably built in the fifties, which is why your floor is collapsing. Cause I have one of those too. Someday, you're gonna remodel it, but someday that house is gonna have to come down. It probably won't be that long before what that structure does have no value. And because of affordability and the fact that there's all these other manufactured homes on that street, it would make sense that come time for that house to come down, you would wanna put a manufactured home on it. I would hope it would be a new one, but.
At that, at that point, if we enact the ordinance to require it to be, it would have to be. And that is my plan, that's my, I'm fully intent on that, I mentioned that to the council already.
Say that again, Jeremiah?
So, so given, say he remodels this home and lasts another five or ten years, but by that time, we've already pushed through the ordinance that limits new manu, or um manufactured home installation to no older than twenty years. It would have, or a different, I mean, that's gonna be the recommendation, but you guys can change it if you'd like. That's what I've seen elsewhere, so I didn't, when I read through the code and I see all the, the enforcement I have to do on abatements and the fact that I went over budget uh by five thousand dollars just on one abatement last year. Um, that was a manufactured home, that was in very bad shape. Um, it makes me wanna push that forward. And to, to do, just like you guys said, bring the appearance of the town up in the future, so it's forward thinking, but that's not what we're talking about on the agenda night, but I do fully intend on bringing that to you guys.
I think we have to consider this in light of like the general plan and the look of the town in the future and all these even like.
Now, as to Mr. Chilton's point, um, he wanted you guys to consider that, it was clear in his, in his letter.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approving zoning amendment Z eighty-eight to the zoning map of the town of Pine Top Lakeside. Therefore, therefore amending the zoning map from R one to M H four on one point one seven acres or three eleven thirty-four oh oh seven B only.
That'll be for point five eight acres.
Or point five eight, yeah, just the, just the one and um on East Poplar Drive to the town council.
I second.
Any more discussions?
So with his restatement of that, from the point five eight, so the one, when he mentioned the one point, that's.
Yeah, it's null and void, it's the point five eight is the B parcel.
Correct, I just had both of them added into the point five eight.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Mr. Pence?
Nay.
Okay, that is uh five to one.
There you have to say how it goes, five to one.
Five or, five theas and one nay.
For the motion.
For the motion and the second. Since there's no further items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.